Recorded.
All right, welcome to the Lander County Commission meeting, Board, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissions for February eleventh, twenty twenty one. I'll call the meeting to order. JR, you want to lead us in the pledge allegiance, pretty please?
All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Have a moment of silence? All right, moving forward is Austin. Austin, are you there?
I'm here.
And who do we, is that on?
We have Ted, is Ted there?
All right, all right, very good. All right, Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from twelve PM to one fifteen PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public lobby, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commission reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. I did have a couple of quick meetings. On the first of February, we had our Austin Chamber of Commerce. On the third of February, my Justice and Public Safety meeting, which is the national meeting, and on the eighth, the Austin Airport Board. The, the Chamber and the Airport Board are busy, of course, finishing up their budgets and proving those and getting those in and projects that we're going to be looking at. And under the Justice and Public Safety, we're looking at new resolutions for the annual meeting of NACO, which is in March, of course. So, and I see we just got a notice from Liz that if you're interested in doing that, to please go through her so we can do the, all on the same registration. And the other thing I wanted to add is, we did get the new In God We Trust at the courthouse in Austin, and that is up. Thank you.
All right, so I attended the Battle Mountain General Hospital meeting, and the two main things that were discussed there was that we hired two, two new ER doctors. Most of the stuff was standardized, board meeting, nothing that jump out. The other thing I attended via Zoom was the Legislative Committee meeting. Once, once a week or once every two weeks, we meet and go over the bills that are coming forward, and they had some, this, I think, this is, Bert, I want you to correct me, because this, the thing that they were wanting to pass is just absolutely crazy to me, the counties within counties. There's a bill going, they're trying to push through, and are you aware, are you aware of that? I, so yeah, they're wanting to try to, and I'm not sure, they say it has to do with, like,
Big tech?
Yes, they're big tech. Companies are wanting to come in and try to form counties within counties. For example, if a big tech company wanted to, or a mine wanted to come in and get land from the BLM, they're going to lease that land, and then they're going to buy the adjacent property, and if they can put in at least a hundred homes, then they can start forming their own counties. And as soon as they're self-sufficient, then they are their own counties, which would mean that, am I correct in the way I'm saying this? Okay, and so that would mean, like, if they were, the net proceeds, the counties would no longer receive those net proceeds. So they can just spot, and wherever, you know, if they want to do it that way for their funding, because that's a really good way to be funded, is go anywhere where there's a mine, and if there's any free property around, or jump in on mining claims, they can jump in and form their own new communities, which is just ludicrous to me, but they're trying to push that bill through, so it could, counties inside of counties inside of counties, and if they can fund themselves, then they get to move forward, and as long as they can pay for their, all of their infrastructure, their ambulance, their fire department, their law enforcement, then they're golden, and they get to be their own, and they get to form their own board. At that time, they get to start making their own decisions, and they're no longer, they would be no longer part like of Lander County.
So essentially, the big tech companies become their own government?
Absolutely, without doubt. And so that's something that everybody really needs to be paying attention to, because I, I would have never, when they, when they brought that up in that discussion, I, I was in awe that something could go on like that. Did you have any more to add to that?
Yeah, I think anybody privately or big tech, anything that has fifty thousand acres can, that's, as soon as they meet the fifty thousand acres requirement, they could, you know, claim a sanctuary county.
Fifty thousand, I think that's absolutely, that's nothing. And so, yeah, that's, that's a really big deal, and people need to pay attention to that, because that would destroy, that would, they wouldn't even have to worry about us losing our net proceeds, they would just come in and form their own communities, or, I mean, mining companies could do that themselves.
Commissioners, they would be for, excuse me, commissioners?
Yeah.
They would be forming their own districts.
Yes.
That's already on the books now, and they're just, they're just altering that statute a little bit, but right now, they can do most of those things you've just mentioned if they form their own district.
Wow, that's amazing. So that was, you know, one of the bigger topics of that meeting, so.
Thank you.
No report. I don't really have anything to report.
Okay, all right, very good.
I went to two meetings, but they didn't really accomplish anything.
Okay, so, all right, so staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
Most of everything that I have is on the agenda. As Kathy had covered, most of the, the bill drafts, there are some other interesting bill drafts that are coming up. And that's taken up most of the time. A lot, a lot of time is spent responding to these drafts, and then if they make a modification to the draft, they send it back to you, and you have to re-respond, and what kind of impact it has on your county. So for every one of these bill drafts, we have to put in a response, and it's, it's time-consuming, and so that's what most of my time has been spent on. I do have to, I told you guys I'd be back to you at some point with how much Laken and Heidi had saved the county on the, on the insurance, and it totals seventy-six thousand two hundred, so, a year, so that's, that's big time for them. I want to, just, you know, last time, I think I had reported, I said it was around fifty, but, so that's, that's the true number there is seventy-six thousand two hundred. Pretty, pretty big deal for the little extra work that, that they did, and says a lot for what they do.
Yeah, it's very nice.
That's all I have.
Thank you, guys. All right. So, for public comment, comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. Any discussion of those comments are at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. So do we have anyone with public comment? Hello? Go ahead.
Sadie Calvin, Lander County, Bert, I just. I don't slip her often, do I? So I just wanted to give an update from the clerk's office. We have about fifty-one BDRs that will affect the clerk's office, and twenty to twenty-four of them are elections. Next week, we'll have a Board of Vic meeting. I'll try to breeze through this. The Secretary of State has requested for there to be two employees on a conference call two days out of the week and a minimum of a half a day for these calls. And they're working on a top-down election software that will go, they're hoping to end effect in twenty twenty-four. This will be like DMV is my best example to use, to where they will have everything at the state level, and they'll come down to the counties versus the counties reporting up to them. It's called VREM, Voter Registration Election Management. We have a weekly call that, we're working on a BDRs for fictitious firm names. This is something that some of the smaller functions in the office kind of get pushed to the side because of elections or what have you, and so there's some language that they're wanting to do and change some things on that, so we have a weekly call on that. We have a lean call that we do the first and third Wednesday. This is all the clerks to get together and to go over the BDRs or anything that's going on that we may need to address, or have somebody that goes and is like a liaison for the clerk's office for the legislature, so it's all topics. We also have a monthly call with the Secretary of State and all the clerks. This is the first Tuesday of the month. We have ongoing, ongoing training for the Tyler on updates or things that need to be fixed, that they have taken over a portion of clerk stuff that was ADS. Also, we have training that's going on. We were down here yesterday for quite a while and, and seeing how to get this working properly, because it's new for the presentations. Also, that's with Jabs and PDI, and PDI has, the gentleman that is with them, he's been with the counties but with another company for quite a few years. And so we are working on an agenda and minute system, Caitlin, our office, and then we'll have it go out to the secretaries that do agendas for the evening boards. We're also moving forward with PDI on the archiving to update, to where on our webpage, we'll be able to, this is in the future, to put any boards, their agenda, and their minutes, so then that way they're able to go and, and view those in an easier accessible way. Also, a couple election, or a couple of budgets ago, I had spoke on our archive books. That's under my responsibility for that, so we're looking at having that redone, and it'll be put on the budget. But also, there's been a grant that has been extended, and I'll be getting more information on that, so hopefully they'll be able to help pay for the funds of that, because it's quite costly. For new election equipment, we're looking at a company called ESNS to bear away from Dominion, so they were here.
Katie, what was the name of that company?
ESNS. I believe she told us they, I don't know, I, I don't remember, she said forty-one percent of the election, or fifty-one, I don't remember which number that is, that they have for the election stuff. I do have information in my office for anybody that would like to come and touch base. I had got with Kathy, and she had came in and, and that for a bit, and then they did a demonstration, and we can ask them to come at any time if you prefer to go over that or have them on a call or anything. Luris, I touched base with her on the monies for that, and she is willing to grant money to us for the new equipment, and that's the software and the election stuff. So it would be the same company from beginning to end. Right now, we have two different companies and what have you, and so it'd be very, very beneficial to have the same company to go to and the securities for that. And so that is great for Lura to be able to help us out with that, and all the things that she's helped the county through the tech fund is where that would be coming from. Also, for the BDRs, the legislature tried to pass this last time. It's where they want to have a primary election for the presidential individual, so it would be in January. And then we'd have a primary in June, and then we would have a general in November. So basically, if that passed, it's the last Tuesday of January, so it would be January thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Early vote would start January thirteenth and end on the twenty-sixth. Our pre-lat start at the very beginning of January, so anything that, to put that election together would be inputting in December. And so this is something that they're wanting to pass, so they would have, we would have three elections that we'd be programming in a year.
What's the reason for that? Why, why are they looking at doing that?
It's something that they've wanted to do for quite some time. I can get more information for you on that.
You'd be interested to know.
They also want to pass to where that election, you would be, everybody would be getting paper ballots, like we just did in our general. So then that's another cost as well, because everybody would get the paper ballot. And let's see here, so also with that, the counties have to pay for that additional election, so it's the same cost as your, as your primary and your, and your general. So that's extra funding, you know, so if it's fifty thousand, twenty, you know, whatever it may be depending on, you know, then that county has to pick up that expense. Let's see here, Richard was in Austin last week at the courthouse going over IT things, and so he's moving forward for us to be able to connect for here and have better services and that type of thing, so that's exciting. And then I got with Bert, being, we have so many meetings in the office, I'm like, hey Bert, I'm like, can I touch base? I need a whiteboard or something for the trainings, because we're all signing onto the computers, and then just being able to listen to one speaker, otherwise it echoes or bounces off. And so we're looking at borrowing the smart board to be able to help us with better training up in the office and just have one large screen and, and what have you. So I appreciate that, and I think that's all that I have. So I just want to give you an update of what's, what's happening in the clerk's office.
Thanks, Sadie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So do we have any more public comment? Moving on to consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any members of the Board or any citizens may request that and it may be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for nominal fee. Number one, approval of February eleventh, twenty twenty-one agenda notice. Number two, approval of May seventh, twenty twenty, special budget workshop meeting minutes. Number three, approval of August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number four, approval of September tenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number five, approval of September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number six, approval of January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes. And number seven, approval of payroll change requests. So is there a motion?
Well, we only have minutes for September twenty-fourth, and then those need correction. Is that what you said, Patsy?
I'm sorry?
Did you say the minutes that we received for September twenty-fourth were incorrect?
No, we've already corrected those.
Oh, okay.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve number one, the approval of February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one agenda notice. Number five, approval of September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty meeting minutes. And number seven, approval of payroll change requests. I did not receive any other minutes.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, so Patsy made the motion. Brian second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so for possible action to approve, disapprove, a payment of bills. So we're going to, in that, we're going to pull out check number two, one zero six two one, and two one zero six three two. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the remainder of the payment of bills.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, so Brian made the motion, Patsy second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so then do we have?
I'll make a motion. We approve the checks pulled out, two one zero six two one and six three two.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
So Patsy made the motion, JR second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I abstain. Never made a term employer.
All right, moving forward, for possible action to approve or disapprove and amend the contract for the library service between Elko County and Lander County. I thought we had already done that.
That's what I thought.
I thought we'd already done this, so was there something changed or something that needed to be done?
We do it every year.
I thought we just did it recently, though. We didn't?
It's been that long ago.
It's been that long ago? Okay, sorry, guys.
My how time flies when you're having fun. I, I do have a question, and that was, actually, I have a couple of them. One is the correction that we need to make on the mileage. They have the old mileage amount in there, and we have to, we have to put that in property of fifty-six cents per mile. But the other question I had was on the internet services, and I thought, when we did the school, and they did all those nice grants for us, I thought that internet also included the library. And yet I see we've got quite an extra amount in here for internet.
Where's Kat?
Laken Sullivan, for the record. So I just spoke to the gal from the library yesterday through email, because we had budgeted a hundred and twenty-one thousand for the E-rate to be done at the library for a project, and that has never been paid for yet, and she explained to me that it was, it's a cost included in the contract now. And so we have that money just sitting there, that extra hundred and twenty-one. Now, I don't know if it's going to be a recurring thing, or if it's just for this year to pay for that cost. That's a question we would have to ask them. But we did budget to have that E-rate done to the library.
But what are we doing? I thought something was being done under the grant.
I wasn't aware of the grant.
The one where they, that we've been working on?
We did the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, the libraries were separate from the school, but there's still a chunk of money that needs to be paid. The grant only pays up to that certain amount. And remember when we had the, I, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for this question with all the paperwork in front of me, but we had a part that the county had to pay, and there was discussion on the last time that this was brought up, whether the library would bill the, the county as in, like, through the contract or something.
Okay, so it had been last year and didn't use it, so it's in again this year.
We budgeted for the contract for a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and then we also budgeted a hundred and twenty-one thousand for the E-rate, the internet to be done. And I thought that was going to be a separate bill for the work, the construction of it, but they just, my understanding, they just added it into the contract. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on if it'll just be a one-time increase or...
Do we have anybody on from the library? I don't think so.
So I think that on the, so would you have clarification on this? I would like somebody, especially, and I brought this up, anytime we're doing contracts like this, that somebody that, that represent, they need to be here, so if we have questions like this, we're not doing this, because they're the only ones that can answer that for us. So is it far-fetched to just table this until, I'd like to have it tabled, because I also have a question on this, this is how, that, I want to bring up before we're finished, though I want you to go ahead, but then I have a question in regards to this contract.
I was just going to say, I could go reach out to them and see if we can call them. If you want to table it for now, we can come back to it.
Well, is it, how's everybody else feel?
I believe, and I think Ms. Patsy was probably going to address it, but I think there's some changes that we're probably going to request made in this contract anyway.
Okay.
Like on number six, they changed the wording from will to may, and I think that was something that we were looking at, having them change back to will. So I'm not sure if you guys want to have, have, and then we can, we can table this and then have clarification, and if there's anything else that you would like changed in this, now's the time.
One thing I'd like to do, too, some of these contracts, is I'd, I'd really like to look at whether there's something we could do in-house. I mean, there's several contracts that we pay out, you know, but yeah, is it something that we could do if, or if the county save money?
I know the, when this was brought up once before, that, that was the initial expense of purchasing the, the books and continually purchasing the books. So on that, I would like to see how many, truly how many books are checked out a year versus how often the computer is used for doing research and stuff like that, if that's something that can be done with that as well. Just so we know, is it being utilized, not that I want to get rid of a library, that's not, but I just would hate to go to the expense of buying all of these books and then them not being utilized. So just to kind of make sure that we're doing it the right way, if that's, if we do decide to do something like that. And on this also, it had been brought to my attention by somebody in the citizen, from the community, and this is a kind of a crazy thing, and I don't know if it really has much to do with the contract, but it's something that still was brought up. That concern, this is not coming from the worker that works with, this is somebody who has been in the library when something like this has happened. They have been directed that if they have someone in there and they need to call law enforcement, that they're not allowed to call law enforcement if they have somebody in there that's making them uncomfortable. And so I really like this, if that is something that's true that's going on, because you have people coming in all the time using the internet, different people. And so that had been brought up to me, and that's very, makes me unnerving, but I don't know where to even start with that, so I thought, since we're talking about this anyway, that if that's a fact, then we need to make sure that that's corrected.
Well, we certainly can ask Elko that question. I mean, it's an excellent question.
Yeah, pose it to them, you know, is that true, that if your employee is in fear, are they allowed to call the sheriff's department, and if, if not, then why?
Who do they call? What's security, what's security measures is what we're asking for? What do they have in place? And I noticed they are looking for, what, ten brand-new computers, and I like your idea about numbers, because I know that would mean probably one for Austin, so do you really need nine? What, what is the utilization, and do, and how many do they have now? So I, I think, I think we should, yeah, I think instead of calling somebody today on this, let's just go ahead and defer it.
And Rita has a little bit more information.
And we'll, um.
Rita Rogers, I'm the director at the Civic Center, and I am the one that has the concerns of what's going on with that library. We've had some incidents that's taken place. What I have personally seen, the, the stuff that goes on the computers, and they're told that that's a private, you can't interfere with what they're watching and stuff.
Unmuted.
You're fine.
Okay, and, and I personally seen it, and I personally called the cops on it, because this is something that, it's terrorism that was being watched. It is pornography that was being watched. It was ugly, and I seen it personally. And I just feel, as director, I need to know what my job is as far as that library goes, and what I'm responsible for, you know. But we have, we have some really shady characters that come into that Civic Center, guys, and everybody in there needs to feel safe.
Wouldn't it fall under the same, like, county policy, since it is like a, a county, we provide it? I mean, wouldn't it fall under the same policies as far as, you know, not safe for work type stuff?
You know, Commissioner, I, I do think we need to look further into this, because there is quite a, quite a big deal when internet first came out, and people were watching things at county libraries, and where it was becoming personal and not, so we need to do a lot of research on this, so let's just, let's just go ahead and defer, yeah, thank you.
So what I wanted to make sure it was all out, so that we know what the issues are dealing with.
And, and when you do, I mean, I, I would like to be involved. I would like to know what I'm responsible for, you know, down there and stuff.
Thank you.
So, okay.
I would just like to say that this is the very first I've ever heard of it.
I know.
Well, that's why.
Yes, because there was a conversation, and it had already been dealt with, and so I was, so.
Well, when I seen it, when I seen it on here, that's why I'm here today, because I, and I've been talking to several, maybe what we could do, you know, Liz, I've talked with you. And, you know, of, of something so that people feel safe when they're in that library. And when you've got somebody sitting beside you, and you're looking, and you're seeing what that person is seeing, you know, it's, this, this is a public, it's not private. Yes, you're using a computer, but it's public, and we don't have to guarantee you a computer. You know, it's just that simple, so I just want to make sure everything is safe, and maybe we can get some guidelines there, so.
Thank you.
Okay, guys.
All right, moving forward. For discussion of possible action by the Lander County to pursue all options available in cooperation with the Bureau of Land Management, BLM, on open North Fourth Road. Representative with BLM Management has been invited to participate in this discussion.
Okay, I'm not sure. Do we have anybody from the BLM on the line? It does not appear that we have them. So I, I did speak with John Sherby and Doug Furtado, and they aren't showing up present in meetings yet, just because of BLM policy, but the, is what I'd gathered from our conversation, is really three ways to handle this.
Unmuted.
Either the county can file suit, but it's pretty much the county filing suit against an individual of Lander County. There, the BLM is looking at the gate, that appears to be on BLM property, and they can send a letter having it removed, but the gentleman would probably most likely move it up the road back onto his property, because it's only about three hundred feet from his property, is what it appears at this time. And at that time, the county can either go forward and offer him some sort of payment for access through there, or we can work with the BLM, and they said they'd be happy to work with us, to possibly put in a road around it. The way that this is, and the access that it cuts off to other ground, has access to it through another route that is just much more inconvenient for people.
On the top end.
Yep, and so we don't really have much standing if we were to pursue it. But they said that they would be happy to work with us if that's the direction the commission would like to go to, you know, and they got to do their environmental assessment. Make sure that that's good, and they would cut a road in for us, make, make it happen just as, as good neighbors. So whatever direction the county would like to go, we can, I can start working with them, and we can go wherever you guys want to go with it.
Well, cutting in a new road, if that's possible, it would be the easiest thing to do.
Yeah, they had a meeting.
Yeah, they had a meeting about extending the, uh, the OHV trail, the Shoshone, the trail, right? To run through, up through round Mill Creek. Did, did you hear about that meeting?
No.
Mr. Merrill just was telling me about it.
That's been for, yeah, they, that's been, they've been trying to do that for quite a while.
So my, my question is, would their thoughts be this road that they would cut be, would be, would it be part of that system or?
No, I believe it, um, the conversation that we had was just strictly a road around the private back tying into the existing road.
I'd be interested in looking at that, yeah.
Okay.
Working with the BLM.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, then that's what we'll do.
So we'll just direct Bert to work with BLM and see what that entails.
Okay.
What would be the cost of putting the road around it?
Uh, the BLM's, when I asked them that, they said that they would do that, that that's not something that they would, you know, they wanna be good neighbors to the county and, and work with us as much as they can, so. We wouldn't be accruing costs.
Perfect.
Nice, win-win.
Yeah.
All right, moving forward, um, I need a motion on that. Oh, so to do, to decide which way we wanna go, is it?
Just, is the heading direction good enough?
Yeah, I think direction is good enough, Ted.
The whole, the whole commission, I just wanna make sure that.
You, at this point, uh, direction, if you put on the record that at this point, you're just giving direction and you're not making a margin, until, until more options are brought in front of you, that would suffice.
Okay, so yeah, we're gonna go ahead and give directions for, to, for the BLM.
Okay.
All right. So for four, Nevada Department of Transportation update, Nevada Department of Transportation NDOT, regarding the pending and upcoming, upcoming projects in Landor County. Do we have anybody here? From NDOT?
Oh, I apologize, I, so I did.
I did speak with, uh, Endot as well, and then Caitlin had reached out to him. They asked for, they asked Caitlin if we would, uh, table this and move it to an action item, um, for the twenty-fifth meeting. And that they would get the information over to Caitlin for what action they're looking for. Um, they never did clarify on what action they're looking for, so this has moved from a general update that they typically give us, um, to an action item.
All right. So we'll go ahead and table that and for next time. But moving forward for five, uh, for possible action to approve, disapprove, the appointment of one individual to serve on the Landor County Public Land Use Advisory Planning Commission, which currently has three vacancies, new term, uh, new terms, uh, are from July first, twenty-twenty through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. And to consider all of the following applicants, to include Daniel Tamara.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the appointment of Daniel Tamara to serve on Landor County Public Land Use Advisory Planning Commission, which currently has, uh, or actually to serve, a new term from July first, twenty-twenty to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Very good, do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, so Ryan made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, and our thank yous for Daniel stepping up again to be reappointed.
Very good, thank you. So moving forward, uh, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the amended airport, um, hangar lease agreement.
So as you guys know, this was before you guys a while back, um, the, it is my fault on, on part of this. But part of it's not, is what happened is you guys approved, this board approved, um, say seven or eight months ago, I don't know how long ago it was, a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar hangar lease agreement.
Right.
Um, I was unaware of that, so I had a gentleman approach me wanting to lease a hangar, and I said, of course, send him up. He got the lease agreement, you know, filled it out. Long story short, he's been leasing the hangar, um, then Mr. Peterson came to me, said, hey, you know, I have some work that needs done on my plane, I need to lease a hangar. So same thing, he gets the contract and, and thankfully he was honest enough, he comes back and he says, hey, he said, this is not, this isn't the agreement that the commission already agreed to. He said, uh, he said they, you know, they had four-hundred-and-fifty and you have two-hundred-and-fifty on here. And, uh, said, well, I don't know that that's true. So he hands me the minutes from the meeting and, uh, and it does stand true. So looking back at the previous agreement, I don't know how we ended up with two-fifty. Because previously, when the previous commission, right after the hangars were built, it was agreed at two-hundred.
Um. Our county manager added the additional fifty for utilities. And he did that without coming before us. That's what happened.
So at this point, I've, uh, had one leased out for the two-fifty and we're, we would have been, had two had, uh, Tyler not came and just been, you know, said, hey, this isn't, this isn't right. Um, so I'm bringing it back in front of the commission, and now there's some backup there that, um, Tyler provided with, the agreements from other county-owned airports. And what they charge per square foot and what amenities are involved, whether it be heat, um, cooling, um, you know, if they have to taxi the plane in, taxi the plane out, if they have any of them services included. Um, the county doesn't, and so that's, that's where this one is, and it's up to this commission on how you guys wanna handle that.
So I was the one that had something to say about this, was the fact, I was looking at it, if I was the person who owned it, I mean, which were responsible for taxpayers' dollars, I think, we spent, was it a million bucks to build that hangar? Am I correct in saying that?
Eight-hundred thousand.
Yeah, eight-hundred thousand like that, and it was just two-fifty to include or two-hundred to include utilities, that's just, it's absurd. And I still think it's absurd. Um, we have, we have a very nice thing that we're providing, and there needs to be a fair exchange for that, not just giving it away. And I still hold that position.
You know, I, and I, I certainly understand where you're coming from, on the other hand, we, we, as a county, have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to give back to our residents in all forms, whether it's our baseball fields or our recreation center, whatever we can do. Even coming up with giving our air med and such, which is on the agenda. Um, and I'm, I'm looking at, at the cost of what things are, and I know people that go in and, you know, buy airplanes together and stuff like this, are very average folk. Um, they aren't necessarily extremely wealthy ones that can afford an additional four-hundred-and-fifty to take care of their airplanes. So I guess, um, I don't know, we, we, we had a private plane for a long, long time. And I know we could not afford four-hundred dollars a month for any kind of, of, uh, of, space to, to really protect it in, so we had to do other means. So I still would like to see us come back to two-fifty and make it reasonable for our local residents that are interested in flying, and to have those airplanes protected. And I'd rather have them full at two-fifty than have them empty at four-hundred-and-fifty, so.
Are they full though, truly at, at two-fifty?
So I will, I will add that, um, I believe after the maintenance is done, I don't wanna speak on behalf of Tyler, but I believe after the maintenance is done, if it's at the four-fifty, that they wouldn't be leasing one anymore. And the other individual that's leasing one also told me that he would, he would back out if it was at the four-fifty. So, um, currently we'd have two of the three out. If we, uh, if we go to the, if we do go to the four-fifty, I know that, um, they will probably most likely be empty shortly. Just because the, most other airports are, they're so much cheaper. And it's kinda crazy to see that in the aviation world, usually a spark plug is, you know, a hundred-and-fifty dollars. And then you see the, the hangar that they put the spark plug in, they, they don't charge for, so.
Yeah, it's not a cheap hobby, that's for sure.
So, I mean, is it, um, a minimal to, you know, go to three-hundred, is three-hundred a fair price? Um, cause I don't wanna see them empty either, but I, um, also wanna be responsible to the taxpayers. I think two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty is a, a little cheap, you know? I can, you know, swallow better for the taxpayers, three-hundred. I, and I knew at four-fifty, we were gonna, we were gonna struggle a little bit getting those rented out. I just didn't realize that the contract hadn't been, um, updated to reflect what the, what we had agreed upon in the meeting. And so, well, I don't know whether, however, how do you feel, Ryan?
No, I still hold my position.
For four-fifty?
I just, I, I, yeah.
Well, I'll start, I'll make a motion that we do approve the hangars at, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month.
Is there a second? All right.
Yeah, I'll second it.
You're gonna second? All right. Patsy made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye for opposed.
Yeah, so we'll get out.
It dies.
Huh?
It dies.
It dies, so, um.
So then does that go back to what the last record reflect, that we had board approved it at four-fifty?
Unless there's another motion made.
You can make a motion.
Well, I didn't know that, if I threw this.
Yes, you can.
I, I, so I would make the motion that we, um, amend the airport hangar, um, lease agreement to three-hundred from the four-fifty that was approved last time.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so, uh, Kathy, I made the motion, uh, Patsy second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
Would you like public comment?
Do, pub, do you have some public comment?
So I'm Tyler Peterson, I'm local resident and aircraft owner pilot. So, um, just, just to clarify for you, I know it does sound quite crazy that, uh, that obviously the, the price seems quite cheap, especially for a facility that we, you know, purchased or was built in, in two thousand and eighteen and sat, um, vacant pretty much so far. Um, that was a high cost that was, that was put out to, to facilitate building those hangars. Um, but that was the decision that was made by that commission at that time, so, um, a- as an owner, as, as Patsy stated, uh, you know, there are not many pilots that are willing to spend vast amounts. And honestly, these hangars are quite small, so these hangars are not large hangars that you can get, uh, very many like twins or anything in that. And you're gonna look at Cessna one-seventy-two's, one-eighty-two, small family-owned, um, you know, private, small individual-based. So, uh, as Bert mentioned, I did the research, I called every single county airport in the state and have put together a spreadsheet and, um, looking at the amenities that are provided by those, uh, comparable airports are truly down well under, even under the two-hundred mark for county-owned airports, or county-owned hangars. Um, the ones that are in the four-hundred or three-hundred and four-hundred dollar range are ones like Mendon that have huge facilities and they have all kinds of amenities around. And as you guys know, I mean, we're talking about rental of, of property and what property location is everything. So Battle Mountain is a rural place where we do have very few pilots. I would like to see the aviation community grow here. Um, and honestly, I think that you may attract more people to, to come over and rent facilities and become involved if it's a affordable thing. There's, there's people from Winemok that have expressed interest in, in being able to get into a hangar. Um, you know, if that was, if that was a doable thing, uh, if the price was, was right. So quite honestly, Battle Mountain has a, a pretty dead aviation community right now, and that's a sad thing. I'd like to see that, uh, that grow. So, um, I, I would be happy to provide you guys with the information if you'd be willing to look at it for, uh, you know, what the other county-owned facilities are renting at. Um, but many of them are well under, under the two-hundred-dollar mark, and I'm not asking for that, I think that's, that's, you know, not probably very reasonable. But we have four units that we would be better to see, uh, have some airplanes in them than to sit vacant. And quite honestly, I think over that two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar mark, which as Bert mentioned, was not the agreed price in the beginning, uh, was kind of arbitrarily put there. And, uh, for the record, uh, you know, quite frankly, the four-hundred-dollar mark number that was pulled was kind of an arbitrary number without any research that went into it. So I, I do have a little bit of, uh, of an issue with that, I appreciate you letting me speak, and I would hope you'd consider, um, you know, maybe looking at the, the factual evidence that, uh, you know.
What, what's the actual square footage of that, that hangar that they built for eight-hundred thousand dollars?
So they are, each unit is a forty-foot wide door, which is basically all you can fit in it. They are in, internally, they're a couple of feet wider, but a forty-foot wide door. My airplane, which is just a small two-person airplane, is thirty-four foot wide, so you have about three-foot wingspan on each side, so, and they're a- about the same depth.
So they're roughly, roughly fifty, fifty by fifty?
They're about, yeah, like forty-five.
How do you, how do we, how does a fifty by fifty building add up to eight-hundred thousand dollars? I mean, I, I don't understand that.
Well, I think there were four of them.
Oh, there's four in the building.
They're du- they're double, aren't they?
Yes, they're, so there's, there's actually two units, two buildings, and they're both split in half with, with, uh, four, four open hangars.
They're double, and there's four. So we have eight.
And I know the door systems are quite expensive, that's probably a lot of costs.
One thing I do notice that Tyler did point out that I, I had not thought of is, is you can't get a very big plane in them. Um, my brother flies a, a slightly larger plane than, than what these guys are flying, and not, not terribly larger, um, and he can't fit in. They're, they're, that's been one of the main complaints is, um, a bigger helicopter you can't fit in, not bigger, you know, um, an R-sixty-six, cause it's a, got eleven-foot mast, it won't, um, squeeze through the door. So you, you have to do some, some tweaking to get anything in there that's of any size. I know Tyler, I think, had to, uh, you know, put a ramp in there to make sure that his plane would even fit, so they could get a mechanic in there. So the tail wouldn't hit the, the top of the door. So they are relatively small, which narrows the window of people that would be willing to, uh, to rent them.
So, so these are heated hangars?
No.
They're not? So what, what is the utility cost monthly on, on these hangars? We would know it's county.
Yeah, I, I've not looked up the utility cost. Um, they're all lumped into, into one, and I think, you know, that they don't have individual power meters, which is something I think needs to be changed. Um, that way the county doesn't get hit with somebody that's plugging a bunch of stuff into, you know, do block heaters and everything else. Um, they, they put them all on one meter, and that's, that's why there was a flat fee of fifty, I think, put across the board on them, is my assumption.
So is that something that we want to bring back as far as having heaters on it and then reevaluate this to see as far as we would have a certain amount for the rent, and then they would have to, they would also be responsible for their own? Instead of doing a crew block to everybody and everybody be charged for utilities when somebody may be not even hardly using utilities, is it worthwhile to bring this back and putting in, and then put on those meters and those people being charged for what their usage, instead of these people being charged for these people's usage? Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, no.
So I think that I would like to see that come back, and then we can, we look at this and see if, you know, we have it at a certain fee and then you're paid, then you're gonna pay utility, or utilities on top of that. That might be a little bit more easily for some to swallow, but isn't using a bunch of utilities.
So if, so if they're not being rented, what do the pilots do with their planes?
So they typically, they'll either have to leave them out on a ramp. Uh, Mr. Harless does have a couple of shade hangars that are available, he does have T-hangers as well, which are currently, he has renters in. Um, but the shade hangars are, they do have a cement strip in them, but they're, they're not fully enclosed. Um, so, and those are at, at a far lower rate than, than, uh, than even the two-hundred dollars, they're, they're in the hundred-dollar mark, so. Uh, and they do have power available and, and stuff. So otherwise you're left leaving your, your expensive aircraft sitting out on the ramp in the sun and open to the elements. Right.
So I guess I think that would be work, and I think it'd be a little bit, you know, fair to truly have people responsible for their own usage. Like you said, you have somebody in there putting, plugging everything in, and these guys are the ones having to pay for it as well, so I'd like to see that.
Right, I can see what you're saying, Tyler, but it's, on the same token, I just, I look at it, if I put up an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar building, I just, I just, that's what I'm, I mean, I have a hard time with that, and it's like, so it's.
Well, you have to look at it like all the rest of the recreation. I mean, that's, that's part of what we do for the people who live here, and try and make it reasonable so that they can afford to play baseball and softball and,
How many pilots do we have?
Take care of their airplane, yeah, cause they're just average folks.
That are, that are Landor County residents, probably six, maybe, count, counting, you know, helicopter guys. Um, but that own aircraft that are here on the field, myself and Mr. Harless are the only ones that, that, uh, you know, keep fixed-wing airplanes. Uh, aside from, I guess there are, there are one or, one other that, uh, that is a little rancher, keeps his there as well. Um, but I would like to see that be able to be an opportunity to grow. I mean, you know, obviously my passion's been aviation since I was, was young and, and would like to bring my kids able to do it. And, and as Patsy mentioned, it's, it's, uh, it's one of those things, everybody thinks everybody that's in the game is a rich, you know, well-off person and, and it's, it takes a lot to be able to, to make it work, so, um, appreciate you considering.
We'd have that brought back, so we have some better numbers.
For sure.
And I'd be happy to provide the, the.
Well, we've got your spreadsheet, I'll, and I'll, I'll look at it a little closer, but.
So those are marked on there, I weeded out, obviously that's not all the counties, or all of the airports in the county, or in the state. I weeded out the ones that are really not comparable at all, Tahoe International and, and, you know. But the more rural areas and, and like I said, most of them have other things that they offer, and they're marked on there whether they are county-owned hangars or not. Some of them have both at the airports, kinda like we do where they're private-owned or county-owned as well.
Instead of waiting too long, could we, uh, could we schedule it for the next meeting?
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth of February?
If you can get all the numbers for that, that would be great, cause we have most of the information here already. We just wanna look at that part of it, and then we can reevaluate, so we can get moving on it, so it's not just sitting out.
Thank you.
Next time.
So you guys would like us to change this contract to three-hundred pending the next meeting, is that the motion that was passed?
Currently it's stopped to three-hundred.
Yeah, so would you, uh, you know, how do we fix that if we want to go back and change that and just leave it at?
You don't have to, you can say that the, the, the commission has, uh, has changed the amount to three-hundred and they are looking at it again at the next agenda.
Yeah, so we just have.
Okay, so you aren't amending your motion, you're sticking with the three-hundred?
Yeah, we're sticking with that, and then we bring it back and we'll reevaluate the numbers as soon as you bring it back to us.
Okay.
All right. All right. All right, so, seven, for possible action to approve, disapprove, and to pay for Austin Fire Department physicals.
So, are we currently not paying for their physicals?
So, is what happened is the Kingston Fire Department had been, and I'm not even sure if the Austin Fire Department had or not been doing this, they had an agreement with Keith where Keith was paying their physicals, the, is where the problem is, is the, there was no communication with HR, so firefighters would go in, they'd be asked for their insurance card, they would not, the county wouldn't know, so when the hospital would call over and say, hey, do you have employee so-and-so, they would say, no, we don't have them, that get built back to the fire department, because we said no, that they aren't the county's.
I need to stop you for a minute, this agenda item is talking about Austin Fire Department, we do pay Austin's fire departments, we, this should be saying Kingston.
Kingston? So, then we can't.
So, we have, so we need to.
We can't take any, any action on it at all.
No, we need to bump it, I apologize, we need to bump it to the next meeting and bring it back as Kingston.
I do truly apologize for this as well, I did not catch that, and I should have, but is what I would like is some direction, I know that the Kingston Fire Department, they do have a couple employees that need their physicals paid for, and with this process of getting it on the agenda, I think that they're on the verge of being sent to collections because of it.
No, Kingston stepped up, the Kingston Town stepped up and covered it.
Well, I believe Shannon just sent me a message five minutes ago that said that they are.
That didn't, because that was, that was approved at the last Kingston meeting, that they paid for that balance of the two.
Shannon is on the line, Shannon, are you online?
Hello?
Hello, can you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, but when those bills finally got back to me, the board at the, at the last meeting did say that they would pay for those two, um, physicals, so if, if, if you want a week, town of Kingston can pay those out of our account, and then we can move forward from there.
Yes, she said the town of Kingston can pay them out of their account, and then we can move forward from there.
Okay.
I apologize, from the, from the email that I got this morning, it was that they had received collection notices, so that's what I was basing this on.
They have, they have received collection notices, and that's why the board decided to go ahead and pay it, I sent it to Shannon on a voucher to get paid, and then we, then we were gonna try commissioners to do it, but if you just allow Kingston to go ahead and pay them, and then move it forward with physicals, we'll be with you with our other firefighters and do it that way.
Okay, so if I'm understanding it right, then we can actually regendize to see how we're paying for Kingston, because they do respond to all of our, you know, fires and many of our Austin fires and everything, so I, I think it's important we take a look at that, but I also would like to see about the last two that Kingston stepped up to cover, because, I mean, they, they go with a lot of fundraisers for their fire department naturally, and, and, and don't have a whole lot, so I'd like to see us agendize it so we could pay the last two if we approve to continue to pay for their physicals.
To reimburse them for Austin.
You got it, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes, and for the reimbursement.
Yes.
No, Shannon just said that.
Okay.
Yes, we.
So, thank you, Shannon.
We will add that on, we will also, oh, sorry, Shannon, we will also add in there to put some sort of policy in place, so we go through the proper channels, I've, I've, I've become a little more educated on what's going on there since we put this on the agenda as well.
All right, moving forward. Southwest Gas Corporation for possible action to approve, disapprove the agreement between Lander County and Southwest Gas Corporation.
Do we have anybody here from Southwest?
Do we have anybody from Southwest?
Hysterica on the phone?
Nobody from Southwest on the phone, that I can see, unless they're one of the callers. And this is basically just the same agreement, just new dates, yeah?
Ted, that's for you.
Did you hear that question, Ted?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
What'd he say?
That's his understanding, yes, it's the same.
So, I guess my question is, is certainly on the costs, are they all reasonable, because I don't know how we do the comparison, there's a, there's a base rate, and then they pay what they normally pay for the other sites, I guess, so.
And this hasn't changed me earlier, and how does this?
Well, it's my understanding that it's kind of a standard contract that they have throughout, so I, I think that's what we're agreeing to, I'm, I'm not super knowledgeable on what's going on with this one as well, it's just, I think it's a reoccurring contract, and they have very similar ones in, in, you know, every county that they're in.
It's a two-year contract.
Well, it's, it's only a year, and then we can, we can adjust the rates accordingly at that time, too, so, but we really need some expertise, does anybody have, I mean, they're at?
Patsy, why do you say it's only a year, it's two years, January twenty-one to December twenty-three?
It's a two-year.
So, I'm okay with it, I mean, if, Ron, do you have any?
Want a motion?
Yeah, go ahead, hold on.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement between Lander County and Southwest Gas Corporation, and authorize the chairman to sign.
All right, a second.
I'll second it.
Brian made a motion, J.R. second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. So, for Lander County, assess or for possible action to approve, disapprove the agreement between Lander County and Sidwell regarding to their data resale program?
Yes, Laura here.
Yeah, she's right there, so is this yours?
Oh, there, good, good, you came in, good, we have some questions, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Well, I think, I think I understand the concept, we haven't entered into anything like this ever before, right?
Um, well, we're contracted with Sidwell, and we have been for, gosh, eleven years, I believe, they do all of our GIS.
But do they do our marketing?
Um, so whenever people would ask for specific GIS data or to just get copies of our shape files, and it's usually a specific type of criteria that they're requesting, I would just forward that email and have the, I'd tell them, please contact Sidwell, because they do our GIS mapping, and then they would just provide whatever they needed and send it to them and charge them, well, now they're saying, well, yeah, we charge them, but we want a percentage of that to go back to the county, which I thought was a really good concept.
Yeah.
Um, that we get a percentage of what they charge, I've had, in the past, my mapper has done GIS data for people for, well, Nancy's been there since nineteen ninety-five, and we charge them accordingly as well, but now Sidwell's kind of doing it, but this is the first time that they said, hey, yeah, we'll, we'll provide this data for people, but we're gonna give you a kickback, so I thought it was great.
So, it may be that, that, because it's public information, and, and you've referred them to Sidwell, they have done it when people ask, but now it says they're gonna market, really market it, so by doing that, they're gonna make more money, so they're saying, let's include you with a residual of fifteen percent or whatever.
Mm-hmm, pretty much, it is public record, but it's not something that you can just grab off of the internet, and, and their requests are usually specific to certain criteria, types of data that they want for different companies, and this is not something new, we've been asked for GIS data for twenty years, so it's just that they said, yeah, we'll continue to do this, and, and you can send them to us with their request, but we wanna give you a kickback on what we charge, which I thought was great.
No, I, I think that's, that's great, when I read through, I didn't know that they were the ones that did all of our, our GPS, our GIS though, so.
Yeah.
So, if that makes sense, that's, okay, good, cool.
Yeah.
So, you've looked through all of this, and there's not any issues that you're aware of?
She's saying with me.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement between Lander County and Sidwell regarding their data resale program.
All right, you have a second.
I'll second the motion.
All right.
All right.
Oop, go ahead.
And authorize the chair to sign, because I need a signed copy to send back to them.
And authorize the chair to sign.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Brian made the motion, Patsy second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's for Sky Fiber, for possible action to approve, disapprove the agreement between Lander County and Sky Fiber Internet that would allow access to the water tank located in Battle Mountain.
So, is this the water tank that's out by the dump, this one here?
All right.
And this Sky Fiber, is that a new company here in town?
No.
Oh.
My name's David, with Sky Fiber, representing, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, we've been trying to serve this community for Patsy been with us five years ago, and we're finally at a point where we could deploy, if we could have some cooperation, we're also working to do the same thing, it's already in Austin, and we wanna expand it all the way to Kingston, but it's, it's, it's quite a challenge, but.
So, with the Sky Fiber, will it, is it gonna help our internet users here in town?
Dramatically, yeah.
So, my, my question is, how many, because when I looked at it, it said, with the number that you're putting on, I came up with like six hundred?
Six hundred what?
Six hundred people?
Oh, no, far beyond that, each divi- antenna, it has a ninety-degree radius, and each antenna can handle up to six hundred users of up to a hundred meg's each, so as you can imagine, to cover a circular area, we have to put three to four antennas up there to make that work, I mean, so that, but the capacity, the manufacturers claim a lot more than that, and we're not willing to promise that until we see the deployment, so under-promise, over-deliver is kind of a goal of what we've been doing.
Okay, because what, what I looked at over here, it said, the quantity, okay, was like four, it said, access points, each access point can provide a hundred and fifty-plus clients, and you had four of those, so that's where I came up with six hundred.
Well, the number that, it could do far more than that, the manufacturer's saying it can do up, up, you know, they, they claim up to five hundred per device, but we, it's, this equipment is so new that nobody's tried it before.
So, the access points at one fifty isn't right, but we're not sure how many.
Right, until we could deploy to see how it works in each market.
Muted.
Um, we wanna make.
Unmuted.
Okay, and how are your monthly rates going to be for our local residents?
Um, the rates that they're talking about start at sixty-nine dollars and go up, and.
It starts at sixty-nine?
And for what kind of speeds?
Um, that would be like a fifty-meg circuit, and we're, we're looking to try, I mean, this is very expensive equipment, and we had to buy each piece is almost ten thousand dollars, so we're looking to try to see what kind of pricing we can do once it's up and running, but the normal baseline is sixty-nine dollars, but it's, it's very high bandwidth, fifty-meg.
I already pay sixty bucks for five, three, two, it's kind of hit or miss what you get.
No, I, no, I understand that, I mean, we, we pay the same, but we also like to make it affordable, so that's part of what we're doing, and everybody wants to recoup their money, I feel like I'm a doctor here, they, you know, yes, I spent all this money to go to school, I'm gonna get it back this year, I'm sorry, we, we can't recoup that quick, I wanna see you bring that down a little bit, I really do, if we're gonna give you our equipment and, and part of the trade here, so I think, what, what do we do to ask them to, to, to start with a lower rate, is there any way we can negotiate?
I don't think.
They can't, until they figure out what, how, what their.
You're the first community that has launched this type of equipment in all of Nevada.
So, yeah.
So, ideally, we're gonna do something in other markets, like in Austin, we're, we're gonna be introducing a lower package there, because we've been there, and we know what the, the dimensions are of that community with the hills and everything like that, but initially, I mean, just to, to break even, we have to have a price line down the road, that could change.
I understand, if I don't ask upfront, I'm not gonna get it.
So, with, with this equipment, how, so if you put it on the water, how, like, what's the reach?
Oh, well, the manufacturers say fifteen miles, we say seven.
Fifteen miles. So, that would, that would take care of like hilltop and?
Can I ask some questions?
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause actually, this popped up, and I got something in an email, and was going to call and ask about it, because it's the first I've heard of it, several factors, or several things I wanna ask is, is this a point-to-point wireless system like we currently have with performance computing?
No.
With PC internet?
Nope.
How does it work then with distances as far as what kind of equipment is it, so I'm six miles out, okay, so how, what, what would be installed at my location?
We would, we would have a dish pointing towards an AP.
Okay, so it's, this is a, like a HughesNet-type dish thing, kind of?
Well, HughesNet's points to the sky, but this one would point to the water tank, and this equipment, we explained this.
So, instead of a radio, it's, it's a, a dish?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what's different about this equipment, it's called CBRS, it just got released by the military two years ago, and it was before this, always military-grade, and it operates on the eight, the five G LTE service, so you've heard five G, right? And what's really attractive about this stuff is it is not affected by foliage like the other equipment used to be, or it doesn't have to have direct line of sight, like a cell phone, you could go in a canyon sometimes and still get reception even though there's no cell towers around, so, and it's, it's pretty robust, very expensive, and we have to, for each piece of equipment, we have to file with the FCC, because it's licensed gear, which means nobody else could interfere on that frequency, and that's not what is currently in place in town, this is, you, what's in town, you've had unlicensed gear, it's affected by we- weather and trees and foliage, and it has to have line of sight, this is different, we've, we've launched this in Maui, and it, it has come back phenomenal in Maui, they don't have the cold or, you know, snowstorms, but it, from what we're told, it's supposed to be even better out here, because they don't, we don't have the foliage that they do on island, the jungles and everything.
The next question is, you talk about the download speeds of fifty meg bits, currently, people have about three to six, maybe, I have higher, because I pay a lot more money for it, but not much higher, the cost is absolutely reasonable, I can't even imagine, you know, compared to what you have now, which is sixty dollars, as Brian said, for six, I mean, you're gonna get fifty for sixty-nine? That's nine bucks, yeah, that's a really good price, the other thing I wanted to ask is, you talk about the download, but what about the upload, businesses have to upload, I have to have an upload speed to upload documents, that always never seems to be talked about.
Right, this is a, like a cable-type service, cable, they always talk about, you know, four hundred meg download, and then they have twenty meg's upload, this works under that same technology, the same ability, so the upload is gonna be around twenty meg's, not the full fifty, it's not symmetrical, that's for sure.
Never is, the next question then I had was, is there a data limit, so if people use this for streaming and, you know, then, then it, because I know like with the HughesNet satellite system, because I checked into that a long time ago, soon as you go over your data limit, it just basically is crawling, and you can't do nothing, it cuts your way down.
Or it charges you for, overages, right?
Or charges you more, yes.
We have, we have never had a policy where it's, it's wide open, no data limits, you can stream as much as you possibly can off of that.
And you're saying, why do you, radio, or the, the equipment would go on the water tower, so it would be as the crow flies, as far as your distances, and that's seven miles?
Yeah, in a radius, so we're almost talking fourteen miles, it may go beyond that, but we haven't deployed here, and we really wanna under-promise, and it, it, we'll see, you know, I wanna go beyond that, for sure, that's our goal, but we don't wanna make promises until we're, it's an actual test market where we could try it out.
Thank you.
So, then you, we, we approve the contract, we test, we don't like it, we have a sixty-day out, maybe say if this is not gonna work for us.
Yeah, they, they do, they have a money-back guarantee on the stuff, I, that, members of the.
Sixty-day out in this contract.
Laura, thank you, those were some good questions.
Yes, thank you.
Well.
Okay, so you wanna come forward, please?
Rita Rogers from the Civic Center, our library has now put Sky Fiber in, their library, she said that the hospital has Sky Fiber.
Correct.
She was under the impression that the whole county was going under Sky Fiber, that's why they put it in, and I'm just wanting to know, is. And I'm just wanting to know, is the county gonna do this? Or are we gonna stay with our internet? Or what are we doing as far as county goes?
Different service, different type. We're, we're on fiber, um, and we are at two hundred and fifty meg, or gigs of fiber, and that's direct fiber through, uh, an AT&T connection.
Okay, cause we're having problems with our internet, you know, going in and out on us every day and, and all. Um, I know you guys said something earlier about a hundred and something thousand for their internet or whatever. But anyway, the only, the only thing I have against this is you walk into my storage room and it's noisy. It's loud.
Mm-hmm.
Is it supposed to be? I, I don't know. I, you know, and, and it flashes a blue light, but I have people that go in this storage room.
Mm-hmm.
And, and even kids. So I'm just curious about it.
I haven't, I haven't been to the storage room, but I know if you're talking about a, um, a server room, where there's servers that have to stay up and operational all the time. Um, they're noisy and that's why we asked for closets and they have to be-
Oh, this is, this is in a nice big room. It's on my wall and it takes a good portion of my wall with everything else that's there.
Mm-hmm.
And it is quite noisy, but I, I'm just wondering, you know?
If you're wondering if that's gonna happen at a house, no. You have a, an industrial grade circuit licensed gear. Um, and they, they have multiple redundancies built in, so it's not normally like that everywhere. But they're trying to make sure your service is, stays up and running.
It's, it's, it's good and stuff. Uh, that's just my only experience with it. And like I said, they were under the impression the whole county was going Sky Fiber. And I said, I don't think they are, but I don't know. I just know they are and so-
Rita, you said, you made the statement that you have kids that are going in the storage room?
Oh, yeah.
Why would you have kids?
Well, cause that's where my tables and chairs and everything are at. So that's where we store everything.
Well, you have a-
And my internet and, and is on the wall and I've got it with red tape and stuff, but you know how people are. And usually if you don't have a noise, you don't have something flashing at you. They don't pay attention to it. I walked in and thought, what is this noise? And then I walked around and I got blue light flashing at me and then it changed to noise. I mean, it went to a louder noise. And I don't know if that was because it was being used or not, but anyway, that's my experience.
That might be something that you get with Burt and they get with whomever and get it dealt, and get it figured out.
Compartmentalize it off or something.
I could go there with, with, uh, Richard and we could figure out what equipment is making all that noise. I have no idea. I've never been there.
Let's put it this way, make it so it doesn't get destroyed. Because it, it could.
Okay.
You know, how kids can be, so.
That, maybe building a, building a little closet door around it or something along those lines.
I don't know.
I don't know. I have never-
It's, it's just what happened with me. So I just wanted to bring that up and maybe make it safe for us.
We do have one question that came in.
Okay.
Um, do you know, is there a timeframe when you might make it down to Kingston, uh, Gilman Springs area? Well, that's another reason why I'm here today. Because I, I have to look at some land map, li- uh, property, like, we have to make a deal with some landowner out there to be able to bring the, uh, con- connectivity off of the mountaintop down to a landowner and then bring it back across the valley over to Kingston and Gilman Springs. But I was just down there last week. It's a nice place to go, you know, but, uh, that's, it's a long, I've been doing this for five years with Patsy, trying to find a way to first Austin and now beyond Austin. So, um, I don't have a timeframe yet. I, I'm negotiating with individuals who may or may not know they own, own the land sometimes. So that's another horse race. That's another horse race unto its own, so.
Okay. Okay, so.
Can I ask?
Yes.
You should note that there is no sixty day, uh, out in this contract.
There's no sixty day.
Well, there's not. I thought I read it.
Well, that's generally for the rep, when we add, give service to residential people or businesses. This is just for the repeater. This is not the, uh, when people start ordering services, that's when they have that option of, uh, money back guarantees. So this is just for, to put our equipment up there and get, start, be able to start offering services.
So the backup we have in our pack, it says Lander County site agreement. Uh, this would be clause or paragraph fourteen termination. This agreement may be terminated without further liability on sixty days prior written notice, weather permitting as follows.
First, we're moving the equipment if we wanted out, right?
Well, you got a special deal, cause they normally don't do that. So your legal team must have asked for that, so.
But that's not in here.
Well, what, what are you reading then? I mean-
We, we-
Just what Brian read. It said this agreement may be terminated without further liability of sixty days. Child written notice, weather permitting as follows. And then it says A, by a default, B, uh, and et cetera, but it's, but they put as follows there. That means that A, B, or C must occur before they can get a sixty day out. And that's not what our policy is.
Can you write up a version of what you would like that policy, what, how you would like it to read? And then I'll get it to the legal.
Sure. I mean, what, what we want it to read is, uh, is put a period after permitting. To make that A. So A would be that we, the county has a sixty day out. And each, both parties have the sixty day out if they want. And no cost. Just if they want out, they can get out. And by make, then A, then B, then C. So we should have A, B, C, and D, and A should be the sixty day out.
Period, instead of the little days.
Which, I mean, if you put your, you put it in and the stuff works, we're not, we're not gonna have it go anywhere, you know? But if it doesn't, we, yeah, we want that option. We don't wanna, yeah.
I, I understand.
So if that can come back?
Yeah, I, I have to get it over to legal. In fact, I'll leave here and, and, uh, make a call and see if we could do that real fast.
Okay. So what are we doing?
So is it something we can approve?
Can we approve it with that amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, you can.
Just put it in the, of the motion?
Well, that's nice. I, I love visiting you guys. I was in Vegas yesterday, so I feel like a, a worn down greyhound, so.
So do you wanna make that motion?
Uh, so I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement between Lander County and Sky Fiber Internet that would allow access to the water tank located in Battle Mountain with the, uh, changes that were just discussed.
I'll second the motion.
So the motion was made by Brian, seconded by Patsy. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. So we have to get that back to you, please?
I will, before I leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Air Med, uh, for possible action to approve, disapprove agreement between Lander County and Air Med Care in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and authorize the chair to sign. So, all right.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
So have, has our population gone up or down?
Uh, it's actually stayed the same pretty much. Uh, the numbers for this year haven't came out on your census website yet, um, but they haven't changed the population. As far as coverage.
Do you have, do you by any chance have a run history for us? So give us any idea?
That was something that was asked at last time, that we wanted it, a run for how many, um,
People we've serviced?
People that you've serviced for Lander County and-
Oh, as far as flight, why?
Yes.
Yeah, we have that absolutely today. I sent that over as well to be part of the agenda.
As an email?
We've done eighty-six flights within the last year out of this area.
Have you done any others for the, the portion that was outside?
We have actually. So, um, eighty was here in Lander alone. Uh, the other ones are a little bit harder to track, uh, until they go through the entire system. Um, obviously, we know where we land, but looking them up until they're all the way through is a little bit harder. Um, but I was able to find six that we had that were traveling outside of the area, that was outside of Lander County that we flew in the last year. And then there was another question with regards to the pricing on the MSP. Uh, the price did not increase. It's exactly the same price as last year. The difference you're seeing is because you guys already had a partial municipal site plan in effect that covered Lander County only. And you had credit left on that. So we prorated that to give you your credit, so you weren't losing any money last year.
I, I remember that, but I still thought it was less. Yeah, the credit was like three thousand.
No, it was the same. I also sent over the, um, the agreement of receipt from last year to show you.
Cause the credit was like three thousand and something or something.
It was. And then the dates also, when you were gonna renew, changed a little, so they prorated that as well. So it's exactly the same as last year. And they had your population, I believe, at five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five residents.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement between Lander County and Air Med Care in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second.
So Patsy made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Um, Local Emergency, um, Planning Commission for Possible Action to Approve, Disapprove Resolution Two Zero Two One Dash Zero Two Hazard Mitigation Plan for Lander County Local Emergency Planning Commission, LEPSE. So, do you have anybody voting LEPSE?
You?
Me? I'm too new for that nice try. That's not gonna happen. So, did, what went on? Who put this on?
Me, sure.
So-
Um, so every five years, LEPSE has to do their emergency planning update.
You need to kind of identify yourself.
Caitlin McConville for the record. I'm LEPSE's secretary. Um, like I said, they do this every five years. It just upstate, updates the emergency hazmat plan. Um, and they do it by resolution.
Which that I know they did and it got sent into CERC, correct?
Yes, yes. Everything was sent into CERC the beginning of January.
That part I didn't know, so.
Were there any significant updates?
That, no, there wasn't. Cause I was doing that. Now that I know where we're at, on what we're talking about, I was there and no, we didn't. And they literally go item by item, um, through that list. It was kind of amazing the things that they touch on, so there wasn't any huge change.
Kathy, we are good with the state.
Yeah.
By the way.
Okay, I'll tackle this one.
All right.
Um, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Two Zero Two One Dash Zero Two, the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Lander County Local Emergency Planning Commission. Whereas Lander County has to sharply experience severe damage from natural and human caused hazards such as flooding,
wildfire, drought, thunderstorms, high winds, and hazardous materials incidents on many occasions in the past century, resulting in loss of property and life, economic hardship, and threats to public health and safety. Whereas the Tri-County Hazard Mitigation Plan, the plan has been developed after more than one year of research and work by the county's Office of Emergency Management in association and a cooperation with the county planning team for the reduction of hazard risk to the community. Whereas the plan specifically addresses hazard mitigation strategies and plan maintenance procedures for Lander County and the tri-counties Humboldt, Lander, and Pershing. Whereas the plan recommends several hazardous mitigation actions, projects, that will provide mitigation for specific natural and human caused hazards that impact Lander County with the effect of protecting people and property from loss associated with those hazards. Whereas a public meeting was held to present the plan for comment and review as required by law. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that the plan is hereby adopted as an official plan of Lander County. The respective officials identified in the mitigation strategy of the plan are hereby directed to pursue implementation of the recommended actions assigned to them. Future revisions and plan maintenance required by the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand and FEMA are hereby adopted as a part of the resolution for a period of five years from the date of this resolution. An annual report on the progress of the implementation elements of the plan shall be presented to the county commission by October thirty-first of each calendar year. Passed by the county commission this eleventh day of February, two thousand twenty-one.
All right, so the second?
I'll second it.
All right. Patsy made the motion. You are second all in favor?
Hi.
Now the question before I vote on that, since I voted on it to begin with for in that meeting to go forward, am I okay to vote on it for this meeting?
Yep.
Okay, so I, just making sure. I got called on that before on, for the hospital board, so I'm just making sure it don't look any like a crazy, all right, moving forward. All right, so we're going to, uh, recess the Board of Lander County Commissioners and be in the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board, Composed of Lander County, um, Board of Commissions and the Lander County Chair.
Good morning.
So for the liquor board, says discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the Lander County liquor license, Bra, and I think it was, let's say that name, Bah, Mahini and Rine Midda, DBA RC and Sons Incorporated, so.
Very good. You have, uh, got the, you've got the application in front of you. This is, uh, we've done the research on this. Everything is, uh, ready to go. This is at the, uh, quit, quit mark by Wells Fargo Bank. Evidently, it's, uh, changed ownership and they're applying for a, uh, on off-site liquor license.
The only question I have is when you look at the application and it's, it asks questions, um, has applicant ever been denied a license in Lander County? Have you ever been convicted of a felony, et cetera? And the answer is not applicable?
No, no denying.
No, he's saying they haven't been denied. So, um, yeah. Why, um, what she's asking is why on the questionnaire for the application, why you put N A on there instead of yes or no? So, can you show him wrong?
What page is that on?
So you're on your second page at the, fairly close to the top, it says-
Just a second. This one right here. Have you ever been denied a license in Lander County and you've got not applicable?
Maybe mistake.
So it's just a mistake.
So it needs to be corrected, uh, that-
So what is-
Have you ever applied for a license in Lander County?
No.
No, so.
And then ha- have you ever been convicted of a felony?
No, sir.
No, we checked on that.
Okay.
That would be on both of the applications.
On both of the, uh, and they, you've done the background on both of them, they've done their prints.
Yes, we have.
I'm sure, I just am happy.
The applications need to be corrected, so, I mean-
Does, do we have to make out a new sheet or can we just cross this off and put no?
Well, and the originals that have been turned on, I think that they need to be corrected and at least initial correct, or do you, um,
Can't we take, can't we take these answer with their initials and then transfer that over to the main one?
You have an original application from somebody who did liquor licenses forever and got, don't do it that way. The original license needs to be corrected and, um, at least amended. So it's correct, um, and not a copy of anything. So off the original that they received, they should have received the original here. He needs to, they can do it now or they can do it in a few minutes, correct the original application.
Yeah, and that wouldn't take long. You could go ahead and prove them without just having changed it.
Now, that's not the issue. I just want the original corrected. Ted, yes? Yeah, so I mean, that's not, that's not withholding anything. That's just saying the original is the one that's going to be corrected.
Okay, and where, where is the original?
Right here.
Oh, you have the original.
But I think you're asking for the, the corrections to be made on an original.
On the original.
Yes, that's all I'm saying. I want to make them what we're talking about.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the Lander County liquor license for Bridge Bushon and Vamini Bidha, DBA RC and Sons Incorporated, um, for on and off-site with the corrections, proper corrections on the original application.
I have a question real quick. So name of the business, RNC Sons Incorporated, but there's over here where it says that the application is a corporation. There's some stuff right there that wasn't filled out either.
So yes, you don't, you didn't mark, see on that same page?
My bill are worse, not applicable, but if we're dealing with a corporation, those have to be answered.
Yes, those have. You see where, right underneath that, Ron?
I'm looking. So he just didn't mark the S and O?
Yes, and he needs to mark those as well. That needs to be corrected.
If he's a, you see, is a foreign corporation, authorized by, yeah, exactly.
Cause it says incorporated, so that has to be marked, that, um, and the business isn't stated about it yet, cause obviously it's here. So those need to be corrected as well. All right, so, are we good?
Okay, so the motion includes the proper cor- Okay, so the motion includes the proper corrections.
Yes, so, with a second? I'll make the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so, Paty made the motion, I seconded. Would you go with the corrections, the original? Thank you.
Thank you.
So Kathy, we're going to have to do this over at the office, am I correct?
Yeah.
And then I'll have, have my people sign.
Make sure that that original gets back.
All predicated, all predicated on the proper...
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so we just got to fix that page, too.
We're actually registering with the Secretary of State.
So, they are, they, in order to get a county business license, they've had to have been registered with the Secretary of State, so you need to make sure, you need to get a copy of their state business licenses to go with that application.
Okay.
Okay, please, thank you. So we're going to adjourn from the Lander County Liquor Board and reconvene in the meeting with the Lander County Board of Commissioners. So, we're good?
When this means...
All right?
The office, if it's us.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
For possible action to approve/disapprove parcel map application for Richard W. Harding and Shannon D. Thiss, combine two parcels into one located at 101 and 111 Canyon Circle in Kingston, Nevada, APND 003-064-14 and 003-064-01, Zone R1. This item was approved by the county, the Planning Commission on June 20th, 2020, without any condition.
The, there was one typo here, that's where it says 101. When you guys make your motion, if you will make that 109? 109?
Yes.
109 and 111, you mean, the other says?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Can Derek Kirkland unmute?
This is Derek Kirkland with Wood Rogers.
We're not on your item yet, we just needed you to unmute for our system.
Okay, thanks.
So there's no questions, I'll make a motion. No questions?
Oh, no.
Okay, all approve parcel map application for Richard W. Harding and Shannon D. Thiss, to combine two parcels into one located at 109 and 111 Canyon Circle in Kingston, Nevada, APND 003-064-14 and 003-064-01, Zone R1.
So, second?
I'll second it.
So Brian made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, very good.
Go build your building.
All right, so moving for...
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Wood Rogers, for possible action to approve/disapprove the draft language updating code 17, period 1, 0, period 1, 1, 0, adjacency standards, or to amend adjacency, what is that word?
Adjacency.
Adjacency, standard language to better fit Lander County needs. So.
This is Kyla Sharp, for the record. We have been working with Wood Rogers on the update of the Lander County Master Plan, and some of the things that we've run into that may be causing issues even now at this time, that we wanted to focus on first, so this was one of the ones that that came up, kind of to jump on and look at, and maybe get some direction from you guys moving forward on this specific piece of the code and master plan. Derek is on the line to kind of answer any questions that you may have in his, in the draft of this.
Of course, when we look at these, Kyla, we don't know what, how the old one read, so we don't know how much...
There wasn't an old one.
How much better it is, right, okay. So I know we've always had the authority to require these, but I think it's written really well with what the buffers are, and it gives us the authority to make it stronger, if we definitely think, you know, that something should be in addition to it, or whatever, so I'm very pleased with it. You worked hard on it, and I think it looks good, yeah. You, too?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
No, I don't have any issues at all.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the draft language updating code 17.08.110, the adjacency standards, to better fit Lander County needs.
All right, so do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So Paty made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you. Thank you for your hard work, appreciate it.
Thank you, Derek, for being on.
Very good, moving forward, Summit Engineering update only regarding the Austin Town boundary realignment.
Do we have anybody on from Summit?
This is Larry from Summit, can you hear me?
Yes, we, I, we can.
Okay, for the record, this is Larry Groby. I am chief photogrammetrist for Summit Engineering, and have been in charge of the property line realignment in Austin. I'm hearing a lot of breaking up, is that, are you guys hearing me okay?
We're hearing you fine.
Okay, good. So anyway, as I reported at the previous commission meeting, we're having, we're having issues regarding confirmation of ownership. Counselor Ted and Bert Ramus have seen a lot of communication activity with Nancy Fortner, who we just got access to in December, and she has been going through the subdivision maps we are now proposing. We have eleven of these maps in process, which divide roughly about sixty percent or more of the disincorporated town of Austin. Now, one of the big problems that arose was originally Lander County told us that properties actually belonging to the federal government, I mean, that they believed that they belonged to Lander County. We then found out that those are actually federal, which required us to go to the field and search for the original, well, search for mineral monuments and monuments that were set by, that were set by the BLM. We also found that there's a couple of lots, government lots, not Austin lots. One is a very long skinny, it's literally a slash that goes through the LDS church and the Lander County Southern Highways Department property. There's also a government lot, 26, down in the southeast portion of the disincorporated town, that we have approached the BLM about getting those turned over to the county of Lander, so we can have those distributed to the owners. The problem with both those lots is the boundaries are very, very rather indeterminate, so the best thing to do is to get them patented from the government. So, I apologize for not being better prepared this week. We got the notice for this being a kind of a, just last week, and Nate, unfortunately, who cannot be here today, was out last week because of a death in the family, so I wasn't able to get him to get the stories together for this meeting. I had requested that we be moved to the, to the end-of-the-month meeting, and we'd be willing to come back for that one.
Michelle, is there anybody in Austin there that has any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I, is there going to be, is the end-of-the-month meeting in Austin by any chance?
No, it's not, it's here.
Okay, I'll just, I'll make a separate trip up there. What we're, what I was hoping Nate would have been able to get done over the last two weeks is get copies of the maps involving impacted owners, and then basically, on a day that I'd be up there resolving other issues, to just let people know I'm in town, and to hopefully be able to meet up and answer any questions.
Do you have anything, Bert?
No, I think, Larry, if you'd like to send stuff to us, we can print it out and put it in backup for the commission and save you a trip up here.
Okay, well, the other thing, too, is, is, is there anybody that is good with Google Earth?
Any of you guys good with Google Earth?
What are you looking to accomplish?
Well, I have a superimposition that, for Google Earth, that allows you to basically orbit about, you know, orbit about the terrain, so you can see where we're proposing the, you can see what the boundaries of the subdivision maps are, and what the final parcels are, plus in addition, see what the original lighting was.
Larry, this is Kyla.
Hey, Kyla.
Okay, so does it have to be Google Earth, or can it be shown through our pictometry files?
That I'm not sure of, maybe I can work with you on that. It's, what I've got for Google Earth is what we use kind of for our initial planning, and then we use the photogrammetry we have in 2009 to get more exact lines.
Okay, give me a call this afternoon.
Okay. Kyla and Counselor Ted, I still owe you the subdivision map around the school property. That lawsuit got postponed till March, so we'll get that into you in the next week to see, to be presented to the district court.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, all right, moving forward, correspondence for reports of future agenda items?
So future agenda item, just putting it out there, I sent an article to Bert this morning, and shared it with a couple of commissioners, or actually, JR, not a couple, just JR. But I see where some of the county commissioners throughout the country, there's been a few now that have put laws on the books that have given the authority to the sheriff, the power to the sheriff, that if anybody was to come into our county and try to infringe on our Second Amendment rights, specifically federal government, that he'd have the power to arrest them. And there's been resolutions made to that effect. I mean, if we were to, I'd like to entertain something like that, and I'd even like to go a step further, that it not only be Second Amendment, that if anybody federally or statewide tries to come in and infringe on our constitutional rights, that our sheriff has the power to arrest and detain, and... So, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I'd like to see something.
I don't either, because there's always been problems with federal government coming in and stepping in on individual counties. But, I mean, for us to do a resolution...
Or you actually, you'd make a law. You'd make a law within your own county, an ordinance.
Yeah, we'd have to be something that would be very, very strong. It would back up the sheriff, but whether it would hold up in court or is another...
I don't, I don't know about that, but...
That's why we have attorney's lawyer.
You want some more authority, Ron?
That's what my judge is for.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's what I just said, that's what we have courts for, so I don't have a problem with that, so.
I mean, it's just basically, it's taking a stance.
No, I agree.
And, yeah, so...
And you never know on the oddities that come forward, so, so, yeah. Any other agenda items? All right, so, do you have any public comment? Hello? No, he's... Turn on your little...
What do I hit, right there?
Right there. Amy Nelson, for the record, and I typed this up, because I didn't leave anything out. I have for you, before I leave, an example of what I'm going to talk about. It's from the State Superintendent of Education, Joan Ebert, and it, and it rings true of what I've experienced for about the last, maybe five to 10 years. I spent thirty years in public education, I was a principal for almost twenty, and I have seen a, an alarming trend. And due to the time that I only have here, I'm going to hit two things. One is hierarchies of control, and one is the divisiveness that has been coming out from the federal, state legislature, all the way, and it hits our schools, it hits law enforcement. It affects the family, it affects everything. The systematic breakdown of the hierarchies of control is basically about how what's been happening over the years is breaking down our ability to govern effectively. At the principal level and the teacher level, we can no longer suspend kids. A student can destroy a classroom, and we can no longer suspend them. Law enforcement feels the pain when it comes to arresting somebody who's broken the law, and while they're still writing the report, oftentimes, the person is already back on the streets. There has been a systematic undermining of our hierarchies of control. It's affecting all the way down to the family, the father figure, the whole nine yards. So what I'm concerned about, and you'll see it in this when you get a chance to read it, on the fourth to the last page, basically, the entire thing breaks down authority. As a result, we are being very disrespected, adults, principals, law enforcement, families, parents. It's really bothering me. I love what you said a few minutes ago, we have to take a stand. Our constitution has been destroyed. This sheriff of a county has the authority to run their community, and you guys have a lot of power to support that. The second theme that is also in here that I just want you to take a look at, just so you can see, legislation is in session again, and it's going to come down again. It's been happening for the last four or five years. Every legislative session breaks down more authority, is the divisiveness. They're dividing us by race, by creed, by gender, by sexual orientation, and it has been dramatic. I only have one copy, but I'm going to leave it with you guys. It shows articles in the newspaper and things that have been happening on TV since about 2015. Articles mentioning racism, articles mentioning people of color, articles mentioning police brutality. Five years ago, you just didn't hear a lot about it. Now, all of a sudden, every police is a racist and is out to get these poor kids. And articles mentioning social justice. We never even heard that word. I mean, social justice warriors, this is like a new invented theme that is breaking down our society. Articles mentioning discrimination and articles mentioning unconscious bias. I'll leave this for you guys just to look at, but it is getting slammed down our throats, and it's time we take a stand. It's time we take back our republic. I just wanted to come up and talk about being very watchful about this legislative session, and what's coming out, and take back this community. And so I appreciate what you just said, Brian, that fits nicely with what I'm talking about. I'll leave this on pay, on the fourth to the last page. This was a lesson plan that was sent out to school districts all throughout Nevada. It even has a page where it talks about if you are a black teacher, how you're supposed to discuss things with your class. If you're a white teacher with white students, how you're supposed to have your lesson plan done. If you're a white teacher of students of color, especially black students, this is what you need to do. It even says, well, it's on the other page. Yeah, it's very derogatory, it's very divisive, it's wrong, and guys, it's been coming at us hard. And we have to make a change. I could spend a whole nother session, but I'm out of time talking about what this has done to our youth, and what this has especially done to our young men.
Well, it's a political subdivision that's pushing a political agenda, which is what I'm not okay with.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a...
Thank you, Amy.
Okay, so I'll just leave this just for fun, because it's, do I just get cute, or...
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn. I have copies of the lesson plans, but not of the...
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, guys. All right, made the motion? Second? Oh, I'm sorry, Paty made the motion.
JR seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. There we go.
Thank you, Amy.
Goodbye, everybody.